Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the City of West Miami Regular Commission Meeting and Final Budget Hearing. Today is September the 17th at 7:40. For the invocation, Ms. Aguilar.
Thank you, please rise. Let's bow our heads this evening and pray for leadership, pray for world peace, thank the Lord for the many blessings that we have each day, for family, for the food on the, our plate on the table, and for teamwork. We pray so that our countries can speak to each other, so that we are united in policy and in decisions, so that we can leave a better world for our kids tomorrow. And we ask this in your name.
Amen.
Captain, for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rockell, please.
Rockell, Commissioner Luciano Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronda Rodriguez?
Present.
Commissioner Candida Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanes?
Present.
Mayor DeRosa de Mujina?
Thank you.
Mayor, you have a call.
Yes, present.
Getting ahead of myself. Next item?
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for September 3, 2014, regular city commission meeting, and Mayor Mujina abstains.
I make a motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Approval of minutes of September 8, 2014, special city commission meeting, tentative budget hearings, and Commissioner Suarez abstains.
Make a motion, second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item five, report of the city manager.
No written report this evening.
Thank you.
Item six, report of the city attorney.
I don't have a report, sorry.
Item seven, report of the city engineers.
No report this time?
No report. Item eight, committee reports, report of mayor.
No report this time.
Item nine, citizen presentation, no presentations, mayor.
Okay, next item?
Item 10, under unfinished business, this is a follow-up report by the Office of the City Clerk and ratification in reference to the use of the Elections Department of the, of City of West Miami Community Center as an early voting site from October 20th, 2014, through November 2nd, 2014. And mayor and members of the city commission, at the meeting of September 8th, I brought to your attention that I had received a call from the Elections Department regarding the use of the community center as an early voting site. At that time, I submitted the use to your consideration, and it was left, it was postponed until the meeting of today. But later, I mean, on the, on the following date, I was contacted by the Elections Department, who, I spoke with Miriam Rivera, who is the early voting supervisor, and they were in need of, of a response sooner than today's date. So, a poll was conducted by me among your, your, the city commission, and you all agreed that, and authorized the use of the community center as a early voting site from the dates of October 20th through November 2nd. I received a memo from the Recreation Center Director, from the Community Center Director, highlighting all the arrangements, all the, the measures that will be taken in order to make possible the use of the community centers as an early voting site. So, everything is, has been taken care of, the, the Elections Department has been notified, the Alliance for Aging on the part of the, of the Center Director, Marilin Miraya, was contacted, and all the arrangements have been made to make that possible. So, what I need today is your ratification that the community center will be used as an early voting site from October 20th through November 2nd for the elections of, of November 4th of this year. So, I need your consent, your ratification to, for the use.
I, I think it's a, it's a great idea. I know that, that is going to create some inconvenience, as we spoke earlier, but for the greater good of something that is so important in this nation, which is to vote, I think it's a great idea. So, any, any comments?
No, I think I agree with you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. On, on new business agenda items, item 11, 11A, this is a resolution of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to piggyback off the City of Miami contract agreement with GRM Document Management in lieu of the City of West Miami competitive procedure, accepting a competitive bid which has been secured on behalf of the City of Miami for the purpose of establishing a records management and disposition schedule, providing for effective date, by mayor and city commission. And mayor and members of the city commission, on this item, it's, is brought to you today because we are in need of, of managing and destroying records that we've had for, for a long time. I've made my best efforts to, to secure the better price, I've contacted several cities, and contract with the City of Miami, with GRM, was the, the best price that I could get. I, other cities have, for example, to destroy a box, they charge, they are charged $5. In this case, we're going to be charged the amount of, approximate amount of $2.50 per box. That includes that destruction of the box and, and fee they charge for transportation. I was in contact with the City of Miami to advise them of our intention to piggyback from, from their contract, and they agreed, no, no further action on our part was necessary. I conveyed this message to the city attorney, the city attorney reviewed the resolution and the contract that I forwarded him, and recommended approval as well. So, it's submitted for your consideration.
Okay.
Now, I have a question.
Yes.
Now, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
This is to, for destroy the old records, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, the records?
Some records.
Some. Some are permanent.
Some, well, some of the, of the possible destroyed records, because some are, no, they are permanent, but some of the records that can be destroyed, this is the company that takes care of destroying the old, all those records.
That is it, sir.
Now, beside the, the permanent record that we have to get, the others, how long we have to have, for five years?
Well, it all depends, I understand that the city clerk have been in touch with the Department of Libraries, right?
Yes. There are records that have, have different retention schedules. There are records that are permanent, there are records that you have to retain for five years, others for three years. The procedure, I contacted the Department of Library, and, and there is a statute that you must follow. So, we are aware of the records that we are, that are destroyable at this point, or, and of the records that we should keep forever, others for a longer period of time.
In other words, the procedure is being followed, but there are several different types of records that can be?
I understand that, but suppose, number one, the permanents are permanent?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, number two would be, some will be for three years, said.
Yes.
Number three, another will be for four years, it said.
Uh huh.
Now, and then number four, some will be for five years.
Yes.
My question is, the longest, the longest time for those records that can be destroyed, how long we, we have to keep it before we destroy? I'm not talking about the permanent, that's a perpetuity.
I don't have the answer to that, Mr. Commissioner, I would have to?
I may.
You do?
I may.
Okay.
Some of the grants, grant projects that are funded by either the state or the federal government require for you to have records for 15 years, such as FERDAP. That's one of them, where the retention schedule is longer because the actual structure, whatever you build using grant dollars, must stay in place for a period of 15 years.
For 15 years, right?
Yes.
And then from 15 years?
After the audit has been completed, now.
Yeah, for 15 to maybe 10, 5, 3, and then are the permanent.
Right.
For 15, it may be the longest.
Right.
Okay, that's, that's the answer.
And I would always, I would also submit to the clerk to, to check with us, because what I would like to do is, I wouldn't want to, for us to destroy project files. I think that's important, even 30 years down the road, when, when some of us are, many of us may not, no longer be here, I think it's important for the continuity of the city.
Of course.
For the, for, so that we could build a, a, a library and leave some institutional knowledge behind.
Of course, there are records that have archival value, even though you can destroy them by law, are kept for, for reasons.
Well, that, that's the best way. I just want to, everybody knows about.
I, I have another question. Before we destroy this record, are we scanning the paperwork?
Some.
Some.
Some, some paperwork, I would like to at least go through my office files, and I'm speaking from the manager's point of view, and I'm sure that I echo the sentiments of the Finance Department. It seems to me, and I've only been here 31 years, but it seems to me that somebody asked for a public record that dates back to 20 years, and so there are certain records of value, as the city clerk and, and all of us know, that, that bring value, that could actually be scanned, there are files that can be scanned, financial files and database that I believe can, can be stored in our server, or perhaps in an, in an external drive, so that in the event that there is a public records request made for any specific item of, of financial value to the city, or a project of, of value to the city, I believe that some of these records should be kept. It's not, yes.
Perfect.
But, uh?
Thank you.
By scanning.
Right, but I still didn't get the answer. Uh, yes, go ahead.
The procedure is, you have to develop a, a, first a retention schedule, where you have to document every content of records you have, and document it, and then when the record, specific record, following the, the guidelines, you had, when you destroy, you develop a destruction schedule, and you get a cert, a certificate from the destruction, the, from the company, so in the event that somebody, in, in, in later days, that requests records, you have documentation that those records, according to law, were destroyed. That's, that's, that's what the Department of, and the statute, on the Department of Library, what they prescribe, what is prescribed by statute.
Okay, and this question perhaps should go to Juan Pena, but in terms of, in terms of building records, you know, as you know, buildings stand for, for a long, long time, and it's very important to keep those records. Have we developed a system yet? I know we're very, very young.
Soon as we get our new building, we're going to have a big scanner where we could scan everything.
Include?
The manager doesn't know that yet.
And then it will go into microphone.
The manager knows.
Yes, and Mr. Mayor, this is the first step in order to establish a records management system in the city, because for a long time, you've only have physical records, but new times, and, and the future leads to, to electronic records, and, and so many new, I mean, developments in keeping records that, that physical boxes and records and papers are kind of, of, I mean, getting old. So, that's why we want to establish a, a, a record, I mean, a records management schedule, where we're going to scan documents to keep them for the future, but for now, what we need, right now, is to destroy records that are 20-year-old, that are destroyable.
Okay, just, you know, anything that we can scan that we think is important, we should?
Of course, everything that has value will be kept.
And, and something as big as this pen, you can, you can conserve a lot of records. You know, I know right now we're tight for actual room, for, for a building, but the reality is that when you scan it, and I know it takes manpower, you know, you can keep a lot of record in something as big as this pen.
Right, and we have assigned, I've asked Mr. Quintana to please assist an area with the scanning of the records, so he can start, and we have departed from some permanent records that we're creating a system for. And by the way, anybody requesting copies, these are acceptable under the city guidelines for us to produce, scanned copies are acceptable records for us to produce.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we just are modernizing our city, good, that's it.
And the money's in the budget.
We have a resolution on the table, I need a motion?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, on the motion, Commissioner Rodriguez, how do you vote? Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Item 10B?
Yes, item 11B?
I'm sorry.
Is a report by the Director of Public Works in reference to municipal office building new roof bid.
Mr. Pena?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. On September 8th, we opened bids for the replacement of the roof here on top of the Commission Chamber, City Hall, and some little accessory buildings, like the elevator shaft, and items like that, and the, there was only one bidder that came to the pre-bid conference, and he submitted a bid by spring roofing for the amount of $75,200. The, the bid was missing two items that are required under the bid, which is a 5% bid bond and a full value performance bond. Aside from that, our budget is limited to under $50,000. So, in the interest of getting a better price, I suggest that we disqualify this bid and rebid, but this time using, paying for the add in the herald in order to get a, a bigger pool of bidders.
Okay. Mr. Attorney, are we following proper procedure?
Yes, sir, as a matter, matter of fact, we are. The, Mr. Pena consulted with me before the commission meeting, and I did approve the, the rejection of the bid, because there's essential elements of the bid that we're not compliant with.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, this is just a report, recommendation?
Actually, we need a motion.
Wait, you need a motion. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item?
Item 11C, a resolution of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami repealing and rescinding Resolution 2013-77, authorizing the city manager to execute a lease purchase agreement of a 2015 Ford F-550 chassis, 24-passenger bus from Atlantic Bus Sale through HJAC by pursuant to sales quote BT-0114 in the amount of $86,330 to be financed by Ford Municipal Finance Department, to be paid in seven equal yearly installments of $14,374 for the lease of said vehicle, for a total payment of $100,618 principal and interest on lease payments, and a final payment of $1 to be paid to, at the end of the contract, to be used as an hour loop transportation bus, to be funded by PTP Half Penney Tax Fund, providing for effective date by mayor and city commission.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the, you previously approved a resolution in 2013 for a bus that we were going to buy at that time, the same model bus with the same amount of passengers. However, the Matthew Bus Sales at that time could not provide me a contract within the state of Florida, or any state, to be able to, us to use as a, not having to require us to go out for bid on our own. So, kept looking for it, and then finally, we found this one through Atlantic Bus Sales. The bus went up a little bit in price during that time, and the good thing about the way we finance them with Ford Municipal Financing, if we lose funding from PTP at any point, we could return the equipment without any penalties.
Okay. And, any, any questions, my manager, any clarification?
This is part of the five-year transportation plan submitted to the Office of CITT, and has been approved by the Executive Director's Office and by the trust itself. So, it's part of the ongoing use for transit and transportation.
Okay.
I apologize.
Okay, any questions? I need a motion?
Motion.
I need a second?
Second.
Okay, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes. Item 11D, this is a request for resolution, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the State of Florida Department of Environmental Protection for the purpose of accepting a $200,000 as the city's legislative, legislative appropriation grant, as provided by the General Appropriations Act, underlying item 1668A of the 2014, 2015, by city manager.
My manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city commission, in your pocket, you will find a letter addressed to the city by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection that basically proposes a grant agreement between our governmental entities, and the purpose of this agreement is that we adhere to the conditions of this grant. This money, I, I have to publicly recognize the ongoing and long efforts that, that Commissioner Luciano Suarez has worked with Tallahassee to bring money for the potable water system, and this is, I know, something that's been echoed by the mayor, and also by Vice Mayor Blanes, who have sat at the table for years. I know the well ran dry for a while in, in Tallahassee, but this year, you have all been successful of, of backing Commissioner Suarez and leading the efforts to start to bring money from Tallahassee to start addressing the issues facing our aging water system. It's not aging, it's aged. We, obviously, you, we know that we have tremendous leaks, we have to start identifying where the problems are at, and this is the first pot of money that the city has been able to obtain from Tallahassee to devote to these efforts. Before we enter into an agreement, there needs to be a formal authorization by this board that would allow me to enter into an agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection.
I want to make a comment, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Finally, after, I think maybe seven or eight years ago, I went to Tallahassee with pictures, you remember, Juan Pena?
Yes, sir.
That we took the picture of all those lines, broken lines, and all those things that you have there in museum, that you have there, and all lying on, you know, pieces of pipe, you know, on the ground, and I went to Tallahassee with a brochure, I mean, we make a brochure, you know, about 20, 15 pictures, and Marco Rubio was in the, in the house, and our delegation, but Marco was in the, in the house, and I remember I went, I, I drive crazy, those guys there with those pictures. Finally, finally, we get the $200,000 for the study, and after the study, will be another, and the store will be easier, I think, to replace all the portable lines on the ground here, because that's good for you, for all the residents, for us, because it's only the leaks that we have in the, in the lines.
Mr. Mayor.
It is sometimes, in the leaks, sometimes come contamination too, for the water.
Yeah.
We don't know how much, but it could happen, I mean, it may be happening.
Good.
So, I hope the engineers help us, hey, 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 engineers, you listen, I hope you help us with this thing, sir, and make it the fastest you can. Thank you.
Commissioner Blanca?
Mrs. Aguilar, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you assure the city commission that the city is not spending any taxpayer dollar toward this project?
For this phase of the project, there are no tax dollars involved.
Okay.
This is a grant for Tallahassee.
A grant.
The second phase, we, where are we getting the money? Do we have that money?
We don't know at this point, Madam Commissioner, where we go from here. We have, this is the departing, let's call it phase one, and it's a testing phase, am I correct? Frank, could you describe if, for the benefit of the commission and all those?
I mean, at this phase, what we'll do is basically prepare an entire master plan, which we will create the different projects that we'll go forward with, so without this, you don't have really a tool to go find more funding, so you have to take this first step, identify where the issues really are, what the projects are that we need to take care of, so, you know, the, the master plan may identify a dozen different projects, it may identify two, three major projects. With that, now you have a tool to go secure funding otherwise, so it's a necessary step.
I just don't want any residents to pay for this.
But let me?
Hold on, I, I have a, a, the Vice Mayor, go ahead.
I just want to make a comment to, towards Commissioner Suarez. I personally know the time and the effort that he's put into obtaining this funding. I know that he's gone there to Tallahassee, year after year, as they say, with the same song and dance, and finally, you know, he's, he's been successful, so I personally thank you as a resident.
Well, that's, that's, that's my job, that's your job, that's our job, but this is for potable water, I have nothing to do with sewer. I want to make clear about that.
But I mean, you can use the example of the drainage.
Yes, but in this case, you know, because you know, the sewer have phase one, phase two, so I don't want to confuse, you know, one thing with the other.
Oh, I think a good example is, is the drainage project.
Right, and in order for us to?
How we did that.
To pursue future dollars, we have to identify the problem and quantify the problem, and basically, this document will help us, like, like, let me give you a case in point example, the traffic circle study. The traffic circle study was done in 2004, 10 years ago, I was going to say 10 years ago. Now is when we actually were awarded a grant to take care of the completion of that. So, these things take, it's work in progress, as I call them, but to assure you, Commissioner Blanca, this phase of it does not entail taxpayer dollars, and I know that has been your concern.
This is a grant, Commissioner Blanca, you know what the grant is?
Oh, I know, but I have to ask the question, and I had to make sure whether the taxpayer, the resident also have to pay.
That's why we're?
I wanted to clarify that, and he had to take care of the?
That's why we're, this is a grant.
Well, to add to the city manager's comment, you know, this, particularly with the traffic coming, how do we not have that study in place?
We would not have been awarded.
You know, secure those funding when they came up, so.
Thank you.
Well, anyway, I mean, like anything in life, I, and, and by the way, Commissioner, congratulations, because I know?
You need a motion?
Let me finish, please. A, you know, I know this is a, it's been in the making for quite some time, and, you know, I, I, I'm one of the ones that I'll take my hat to you, because I know you've been very, very persistent in Tallahassee.
Well, this is our job, you know.
Well, you know, don't be humble, you, you've been at it for a long time, so, and I really appreciate that, but by the same token, you know, we got to make sure that, that we don't spend our taxpayers' money, and, and I thank you for that comment as well, Commissioner Blanca. Now, I guess we need to read the resolution, right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Item 11E, a resolution of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the State of Florida Department of Environmental Protection under a grant assistant program, DEP Agreement Number LP-13050, pursuant to line item 1668A of the 2014, 2015 General Appropriations Act, for an amount of $200,000 for the purpose of conducting a comprehensive master plan for the City of West Miami Potable Water Distribution System comprised of a two-step approach as outlined by the project work plan, submitted by the City of West Miami and accepted by the Department of Environmental Protection, incorporating the agreement as a permanent exhibit to the resolution, providing for severability and providing for effective date by mayor and city commission.
Okay, I need a, okay, I have a motion, I need a second?
Second.
Okay, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item?
Item 11F, it's a request for resolution designating October 29th as Ethical Governance Day. This item is sponsored by Mayor Mujina, and there is a resolution, if you allow me, Mayor and?
Please do.
City Commission, let me read it. Item 11G, resolution of the mayor and the city commission of the City of West Miami supporting the initiative by the Miami Day Commissioner Ethics of Educating Public Employees and Local Elected Officials in Ethical Governance Practices, proclaiming October 29th, 2014 as Ethical Governance Day 2014, mayor and city? fourteen, mayor and city commission.
Thank you. Actually, this is something that is very dear to us. As we represent the city, as we represent all the people, we have to be ethical about it and follow the rules and so on. And thank you, Madam Clerk. Can you elaborate a little bit?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this request was sent by the Department of Ethics, Miami Day Department of Ethics, and they are having a, an initiative to motivate future leaders where they have elected officials going to speak before the seniors in twelfth grade in public schools to educate students about the importance of civic involvement and ethics in governance. And they actually are encouraging municipalities to, to volunteer, I mean, to encourage their electoral officials to volunteers to speak before twelfth graders on October twenty ninth, which they are wanting, they are declaring Ethical Governance Day, two thousand and fourteen. So any of you members of this city commission, if you want to be a speaker for a twelfth grader on October twenty ninth, you can fill out this application to speak, and you let this office know, and I'll convey it to the Ethics Department, so you can be a mentor for a future leader of this country.
Thank you very much. Okay, we need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mojina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
And now, Mr. Mayor, are the public hearings on the final budget of the city. Item H is the submission of the final city budget for the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen by city manager.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city commission, in your packets, or actually separate from your packets, you will find the final budget. Today is September seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen. We have advertised for tonight's meeting in the Miami Herald. The first thing, or the first order of business is that when I received the neighbors last Sunday at home, I realized that the ads had been published erroneously by the Miami Herald. I contacted the city clerk on Sunday. I know that when we gave her the ads, meaning the finance department prepares the ads for the numbers, and we give the instructions from the Department of Revenue to the clerk on how the guidelines are set by statute for advertisement purposes. And basically, we have, even the font size is regulated by the state of Florida Department of Revenue. In the ad, we found that the ads did not run adjacent to each other. I proceeded to contact the Department of Revenue first thing in the morning, on Monday morning, the clerk and Mrs. Leon and I contacted them. And it should be noted that because there was a mistake in the ad, that we had to do two things. We had to look at the possibility of re-advertising, but there was not sufficient time to meet the statutory guidelines. So the newspaper gave us an apology letter, and they admitted that there had been an error on their side. But that will not cure the infraction. In the letter that we're going to get from the Department of Revenue, there will be an infraction noticed, obviously something beyond our control. The state looked at the ads for sufficiency and for format and for compliance, and what we presented to them was in compliance. But the newspaper basically made a mistake on their end. Therefore, when we get a compliance letter from the state, it will note an infraction, and I want to go on record to publicly announce to you and to the rest of the world that it was beyond our control. We have received the letter, I believe you have been supplied with copies.
Yes.
I kept the original neighbor's section, I brought it from home, and we will be publishing with the required documentation to the state of Florida all this information. So I had to publicly state that for the record before we commenced. As a result of the preliminary budget hearing, preliminary submittal of the budget, and a tentative budget hearing held recently, we have incorporated some changes made to the budget as indicated or as dictated by the members of this city commission. And we have prepared a final memorandum, which is a brief one that basically speaks to the issue of where we're at in this final phase of the budget. Again, I want to highlight for the record the items. No change to the city's millage rate. Our millage rate is dedicated at five point eight eight five eight to the general fund and one mill to fund the recreation center as provided by ordinance one thirty-three. What does that millage do for us? That millage is, the worth of that millage is based or is driven by assessed values. So we did have to publish a notice of tax increase to the citizens because of the increase in assessed values. The total general fund budget that we have proposed for this coming year is five million two hundred forty-seven thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars for the general fund. The city has complied with ad requirements, we have complied with the timeline structured by the Department of Revenue for our public hearings. We have taken into account some changes made at the tentative budget hearing that includes the reduction of conference and training dollars in the city commission budget, and again, in the executive budget for the city manager for next year, for a total of three thousand dollars combined. We have also taken into account a reduction that Mr. Pena discussed with us and with the finance director in the amount of fifty-five hundred dollars in the streets division for vehicle repairs due to the recent purchase of a city work truck with use of impact fees. So we have lowered that particular budget, that division, by fifty-five hundred dollars. In addition to that, the mayor donated the amount of money that he did not use from his representation account, which is two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for this year that closes on September thirtieth, from his unspent representation account, and it goes back to the city's general funds towards reserves. We have proposed in this final submittal of the budget to utilize sixty-nine thousand dol, sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars from reserve instead of the original presented eighty thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. So we found ten thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars of cuts that were approved by this body at the tentative budget meeting, and obviously, the fifty-five hundred dollars that is included in that amount from the savings coming from vehicle repair accounts.
I have a question.
Yes, sir?
Did you include that your one thousand dollars training and conference for city manager?
Yes.
Was one thousand for you?
And two thousand for the city commission budget.
Two thousand for the city?
Yes.
The training was two thousand?
Yes, sir.
Two thousand, one thousand for you?
Right.
And the three?
Three thousand.
Okay.
And fifty-five hundred dollars for the savings in vehicle repairs in the streets division. So we've lowered the need to take eighty thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars, we've lowered that amount by ten thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. This is all general fund money. The recreation center, because of the implementation of the newly adopted tutoring program, which is scheduled to take off very shortly, the city has, has taken the position that we will have to take a total of eleven thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars from the forty-three thousand dollar reserved as of the fiscal year that ended September thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, to balance the budget so that we can fund five thousand dollars, give or take, over and above what Commissioner Rhonda Rodriguez has donated from her representation account towards the tutoring program. So we have taken five thousand dollars more from those reserves from that particular enterprise fund. We've also reduced some summer camp and leader allocations to provide for the salary adjustment of the director of parks and recreation and assistant director. The park is undertaking a number of projects, we have grown immensely in projects, and so we have now revised the total recreation center budget to a total of five hundred sixty-nine thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars. From that, two hundred and eighty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars are directly driven from real estate and property tax allocation. That is what we will derive based on the one mill that is dedicated to parks and recreation. The rest of the money from the rec comes from the rental of the facilities, sponsorships, after-school care, membership fees, and other fees that basically help the city to fund the necessary activities at the park. There is one item that remains that was brought to your attention at the tentative budget hearing. I think we have addressed everything that asked, discussed through today. I know that Commissioner Blanes has an issue that he may bring to, forward as well, and or revisit an issue, but the only issue that I had as of the writing of this memorandum and submittal is the issue of the salary of the city attorney. Our office conducted the salary survey, and you have a memo before you this evening. It's been really tough to get information from other municipalities. We surveyed cities of similar size and composition. Most of these municipalities have budget in excess of fifteen million dollars. Ours is a very small budget, but we have three responses as of this afternoon at the end of the day. The Village of Biscayne Park has an annual budget for legal services for seventy-five thousand dollars, or an hourly rate that they pay their city attorney of a hundred and sixty-five dollars an hour. The Town of Surfside apparently has an in-house legal counsel on staff, which is an employee of the city. That salary is a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and he or she, I don't know whether it's a he or a she, but is basically afforded all the benefits because he or she is a part of staff, is a full-time job. The Village of Virginia Gardens, all we were advised of is that the Virginia Gardens has a village attorney, the village attorney is on retainer and does not have a benefit packet. That is the only three responses that we received as of the end of the, as of the end of the day to date. Mr. Mayor, again, no increase in the millage rate, no increases proposed in the sanitation fees or garbage fees as we know them, no increases to the water or sewer rates, no increases to the stormwater. We have taken into account the collective bargaining agreement that goes before a vote. Hopefully, they will vote in favor of that agreement next week for the members of our West Miami Police Department, and we're looking to favorably continue working with them until we achieve and bring you a contract for your ratification. So all these items have been accounted for, we have tweaked these budget amounts to take care of people who have retired, entry-level positions as a result of retirements within the divisions. So we have actually taken everything into account as we speak this evening, with the exception of the issue of the city attorney. That concludes my presentation for this evening. I welcome any questions that you may have on the budget and the progress that we have made since the submittal back on July sixteenth.
Okay. Any questions?
Well, I want to address the city attorney salary. Let me start by just telling you a little story. When I first came to the commission, I was very green at the time, and I remember where I took it upon myself to take one of the contracts and read it from top to bottom. And during the process of the hearing, I was called by the attorney, and I was a little bit out of order, so. He, and he told me something that I have never forgotten for the rest of the time that I've been here, and something I will never forget. And he told me, as long as you follow the recommendation of the attorney, you are protected. If you go against, even if, even if I'm wrong, meaning the attorney, if I'm wrong in my recommendation, you're still protected. So I have never forgotten that. You know, we're here as residents of the city of West Miami, and also representing the residents of the city of West Miami, and when we sit at this table, we always want the, we want to do good for the citizen. But we cannot forget that even when we want to do good, sometimes we're attacked, and we have our city attorney here to always guide us. I know he's been very true to the city. So with that, I think times are getting better. I think the attorney has been with us for quite some time, I think he needs to be recognized. So with that, I leave it up to the table, and then I want to hear from you guys.
I got something, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me. I wholeheartedly agree with you. Mr. Pepe Villalobos has been an outstanding attorney for the city of West Miami for many, many years. So I totally agree with you. I'd like to bring, revisit something that we had already discussed, and I've given this much thought, and, you know, I've come up with the same conclusion. I want to revisit this in the spirit of fairness and impartiality. We, as a commission, the mayor, the vice mayor, and the commissioners are responsible to the city attorney and to the city clerk. We appoint and we remove, meaning we hire and we fire. So after your comments of the last commission meeting that you wanted information in regards to what other city attorneys were making, I started to ponder on that, and I've done just the same for the city clerk, and I am sorry I don't have copies. But what I found is very significant as far as how little our city clerk is compensated. I'll pass this to you for your perusal. Most cities our size, even with less residents, you know, the same type of city, the city clerk makes much more, a lot more. And not just that, they have an assistant. There's an assistant city clerk in most cases. So with that said, and I'm bringing this up for all of us, I know that we have busy lives, busy schedules, and, you know, we can easily overlook something, and I have, that's why I'm bringing it up, bringing it up. And like I say, if, if we do it for the city attorney, which he is very deserving of, then I believe that as a commission, we must do it for the city clerk. And I'm looking at this very impersonal. I'm just looking at the position and not responsibility to the position. I don't want us to make a decision that is going to be impartial. And in this case, I think that there is some impartiality. So I bring this up for consideration. I don't know if there is any where we can take to make up for, you know, something that I see as being very significant, you know, with the information that I've gathered. So I hope that our city manager can shed some light into it, and hopefully, we can compensate our city attorney and our city clerk accordingly. I thank you.
You want me to make a motion?
May I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
I think.
I think what the Commissioner Blanis said, Vice Mayor Blanis said is true about one thing. We should, that's why in the last, in the meeting that we talk about the adjustments and about increasing, I make a comment that I didn't see, Mr. Villalobos in, in the agenda, I didn't see that because I thought, and I think in the day that we adjust the attorney, which would, the same day, we should review both of them because both of them are under us, the attorney and the city clerk. And I think we should do at the same time, the adjustment, the increases or whatever, we should do at the same time. And I don't think that we did the clerk separate and now we do today the, the attorney. I think when it adjustments, we should review the, the, the city clerk also. I agree with you.
I also have another comment.
Because I don't want to be like he said, you know, be, no, don't be fair with the two positions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Like I say, we, we're very busy and we have very busy lives, responsibilities and, and sometimes this is very easy to overlook things. And I want to tell you that, wholeheartedly, that I was inspired by you to say this, to bring this up to the table because I, I've always admired the way that you conduct these meetings and you govern, you know, your sense of, of fairness is above all.
Thank you.
So, I, I just wanted to mention that.
Okay. Well, we need, to be honest, I, I didn't expect it, so that's something that obviously we're dealing with the budget and I want to hear, I want to hear from the rest of the table and then what I want to do is I want to then refer to the city manager and probably Mrs. Leon because I know you work very hard with the budget. Like, I, I'll tell you why, my, my proposition for, for the city attorney was, you know how I feel about not taking from reserve? So, I was thinking of, of a way that we can shift some monies around as, as we had a conversation from different accounts to the city attorney and, and then, you know, since you brought it to the table and you're on the prevailing side, we need to.
It's going to be city attorney.
Let's, let's talk about the city attorney, which is the, the item first. Is that okay, my manager?
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Okay. So, let's talk about that, that item.
Right. And, and that item is the only salary that we had not addressed as of this submittal. But that being said, we can take both items up and, and obviously I'm, I'm not opposed by it in any way, shape or form, but I know that, Mr. Mayor, you have been very persistent on your line of thought about not continuing to take from reserves. You and I had a conversation a couple of days ago. We had it before the meeting tonight. And the only place without, in, in dealing with the, the issue of the salary adjustment for the city attorney, the only place that we could possibly draw from without increasing taking from reserves is the item that I pointed out to you, which is the reserve litigation account. That is under non-department expenditure detail. We have under account number five twenty-nine, three twenty, a reserve litigation account and we have that as a place marker in the event that anything comes up during the course of the year where outside of the retainer, we would have to pay the legal department. Sometimes we use that money, sometimes we don't. I don't believe that this year we have, we have utilized the entire ten thousand dollars from there. We have had a couple of litigation cases involving code enforcement mitigations where we have paid very small fees because Mr. Villalobos is, and his office is very conservative in, in, in the way they build the city outside of the scope of their service. And while we're not evaluating the, the city attorney and I'm in no position to do so obviously because as, as the vice mayor said, the, the city attorney responds to the mayor and city commission, we're dealing with the issue of the salary for budgetary purposes. And the only account that I believe without taking anything further from reserves would be to transfer whatever dollar allocation you approve from that account and obviously place it under the salary of the city attorney to give him the adjustment as, as discussed.
Okay. By the way, that account shows a figure.
That we have ten thousand dollars.
Has a figure of ten thousand dollars and I would like to hear from, from the commission.
Where is that, Mr. Mayor?
That is in your non-department budget.
Tap number three.
Non-department, okay.
Non-department expense budget. We have a reserve litigation account, which is five twenty-nine, three twenty, and it's titled Reserve Litigation.
I, I have a question, Mayor.
Yeah.
Your land that you said you found about seventeen thousand dollars from cuts that you did.
Ten thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
What about five thousand dollars that Mr.?
That was included in the, in the whole ten thousand seven fifty.
And five hundred, fifty, five hundred?
Yes, yes, sir.
And twenty-two hundred dollars from?
Twenty-two hundred dollars from the mayor.
And, and?
And three thousand dollars from two divisions from conference and training.
And Commissioner Rhonda Rodriguez, she put the, oh, she put the money for the?
She put the money from her representation account?
For the tutoring.
For the one that, the money that she has through September thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen.
She related to the tutoring program.
Exactly.
Okay, good.
May I be heard a minute?
So, you found ten thousand seven hundred dollars? What you found in this?
Exactly.
Commissioner, yes, go ahead.
What I was going to say is that whatever we have charged outside of the retainer has been from not the, that account, but from the amount of money that we have been receiving from the people that we have been receiving the money. In other words, that account has, to my recollection, had never been touched.
For, I'm sorry, for the purpose of accounting, we have to charge an account. We put the money in a revenue account that is a code enforcement revenue account and obviously the disbursements are made from an expense account, which would be that. But what I'm trying to say is obviously the, the code enforcement revenue basically funds whatever legal fees you have billed us for. And I go back to the record to state that it has been seldom the times that we have received a bill from Mr. Villalobos's office.
Right. I just wanted to put that in the record because we have received this year, Mr. Penner, how much money, just about?
Seventy-one.
From code enforcement?
Seventy-one, seventy-one thousand.
Seventy-one thousand dollars.
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Madam Manager, I understand that you're saying we rarely if ever use that ten thousand, but let's say, do we have, do we have a plan B? Is, do we take, can we use money from someplace else if we, if the need would arise?
What we do with these expense accounts is we basically try to think about anything that could possibly affect the city in terms of something that could become a payable or a liability that needs to be funded. And we find the name and we create an account number for it. And so, what we have is a small place marker. I mean, if you go to another city, you're talking millions of dollars or thousands, a hundred thousand dollars for, for miscellaneous things that may come up. For another city, those, those are peanuts. For us, five, ten thousand dollars is huge money. That being said, we try to think about anything that could conceivably come up during the course of the year where Mr. Villalobos's time or hiring even an attorney with a area expertise in a subject matter that maybe Mr. Villalobos even suggests sometimes about retaining outside counsel, that's like a place marker that we have in the event that something comes up. Does that mean that we always spend that money? The answer is no. And we hope that we don't have to spend it, you know, from, because obviously it's savings towards the city. So, to, to answer the mayor's concern about taking from reserves, I suggested to the mayor that the city could potentially reduce this reserve litigation account. And when you all decide what the increase should be for the office of the city attorney, we could reduce the non-departmental expense account and we can increase the legal division to accommodate for whatever decision you all entertain this evening.
And don't we have some sort of agreement with the League of Cities that we piggyback on something for?
We do, we do. We pay, the Florida League of Cities is our general liability carriers. They handle litigation, anything from general liability, trip and fall cases, legal issues that come as a result of lawsuits against the city on particular, it could be a, a traffic accident, it could be a, a trip and fall, it could be an accident involving a city employee or, or, or a resident, anything of that nature. They handle EEOC complaints on behalf of the city when, when it's intertwined to other litigation. So, yes, and those fees.
We have that to fall back on.
Those fees are paid by the city through premium. And this year, the renewal of the premium was very high based on what our original estimates were. We're looking to spend a little bit over two hundred thousand dollars for general liability insurance, but that covers our deductibles in the event that cases get either litigated in court or settled outside of court, we are responsible for a deductible.
Okay. So, we know we're covered in that respect.
It covers our automobiles, it covers our property, it covers our gasoline tanks, our lift stations. We are fully covered by the League of Cities. We have a million-dollar coverage and umbrella policy of five hundred thousand dollars.
Perfect. Thank you.
But any, any, Commissioner Rodriguez, any, any monies that we put on an account here are based on historical data?
Correct.
Or, or they are, like for instance, the monies that we put for possible storm? We might be fine, but we might be short. So, so it's, it's, we take precautions and that's why I, I went to the city manager and said, which account do you think is less likely to be, you know, affected and, and keep in mind not taking from, from reserves?
From reserves. I understand completely.
Okay.
Mayor, may I have a question?
Yes.
The manager, she found ten thousand?
Seven hundred and fifty.
In costs. Can you lead us? Can you have an idea what is your adjustment to the lawyer so we can have an idea what, what to go, what to do?
Sure. I can tell you my, my recommendation, my recommendation, we should take six thousand dollars out of the account for, for the city attorney. That's, that's my recommendation. But again, I need to hear from you and I need to hear from, from the manager. So, so we have an agreement on that?
Well, you, you, talk to you first.
The reason, okay, I haven't told you what I'm thinking, what I'm thinking is this is an item that we all in agreement and we haven't discussed and we need to discuss. But the item of just to keep it, you know how I like to do things, in order for us to keep it legal and the city, I mean, the, the clerk, and it doesn't mean that I'm not in agreement because I, I am in agreement. It's something that already came to the table. You as one of the prevailing side, you bring it to the table. We need to have a second, a person to have a motion and then we can discuss it. That's, that's what I think the way, the correct way to do it. So, so that's why I want to finish the city attorney and then, and then we go back to, but, but to answer your question, Commissioner, that's, that's my, that's my recommendation.
Now, we, we know, now we know your idea, so we can.
Okay.
I may be at the, the mediator, we may said. You point, you talk about a point that I agree because it's not who is there, it's the office. And the office of attorney, the office of the clerk are under us. Okay? Now, some kind of increase was done to the clerk a couple of days ago out of the meeting for both, I think it should be the next year. From now, we should, we should do both positions together, separate from the, from the, the rest of the employee salary.
We do, we do through the budget process.
You are proposing six thousand. And now, do you think you're, you're, you agree if your, your position?
We're talking about the city attorney.
Yes. The mayor is talking about the attorney, make an adjustment. The position of the attorney is six thousand. And, and you was talking about, was talking about if the adjustment is done for the attorney office, was, you was talking about to be fair, do some adjustment to the clerk office. That's why you was talking, right?
Yes. And, and the, the reason why I looked into this, you know, is first of all, you know, I, I felt that, you know, in the spirit of fairness and impartiality, it didn't, it wasn't there. And then I asked for the information and then when I saw the information, even, even with the increase that's already been giving, given to the city clerk, still this information is significant. It's, it's so, and, and, you know, that's the reason why I'm bringing it, bringing it up. You know, it's, it's just, I mean, I thought about it, I, I really did and, you know, I, like I said before, I, I came up with the same conclusion. You know, that's like, to put it in very layman's terms, you know, you've got two kids and, you know, you, you only give candy to, to the one kid, you know, and you, you don't give candy to the other kid, you know, they're going to fight. They're not going to like each other.
Well, they, they work together very well, so we got to keep, we, we got to keep that harmony.
That's why, that's why, that's why I was, I was going to talk about that. They work hard, they work together and they sometime extra hours, like a manager, they do all the time, extra hours. Now, my question is Commissioner Blanis, because you present something that is real. We should discuss the attorney's office and clerk's office separate from the other things. Now, the mayor is thinking about an, an increase to the attorney office, six thousand.
I'm in agreement.
And, 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 and it's not an adjustment to his, his account, his salary. Now, do you agree if the, we adjust, I mean, the proposition, six thousand to the attorney and three thousand to the clerk, adjusting the?
Can I, can I interrupt?
I just ask you.
We need to separate.
We need to separate it.
All right, but I want to add the idea.
We'll discuss it. I want to keep it in order, yes. Let's finish the attorney and then item.
Exactly. I agree. Let's finish the attorney, let's finish that. We know that we can take the money from the reserves, from the legal reserves and it's not going to affect our reserves.
No, it's not the legal reserves. If I may, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
I may have, the ten thousand dollars is?
It's called reserve litigation.
Reserve litigation, I'm sorry.
But it's not reserves per se. It's the money that we're earmarking for next year in the event of a potential litigation which falls outside the scope of the attorney's retainer.
But it's not changing the reserves that we talked about that we have.
Correct.
Say. Correct. So, with that said, it's not affecting our reserves. Let's make a decision and move on from there.
I agree. I agree.
Okay. So, all, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Miss, I need a sec, I have a motion on the table from, from Vice Mayor Blanis.
And the motion is to revisit again the compensation to the city clerk's position.
It's done.
The, the, the city attorney's done.
City attorney, city attorney's done.
The city attorney is done.
Okay. So, let's, I need, I, I have, I have a motion and to continue discussing, I need a second.
Second.
Okay. All right. So, let's discuss it. Since you brought it to the table, what's your?
Well, look, I'm, I'm just.
Or do you want to hear from, from the rest?
I, well, let me restate what I said. When I saw this information, you know, I felt that it was significant, you know, and as I stated before, even though, even with the compensation already given to the city clerk previously, you know, the, this still, it's still is significant. It's way, way lower than, than, even cities that have less residents. And the cities that have less residents have an assistant, city clerk. So, and, and more importantly, more importantly, I believe that since, since it is our responsibility to supervise, appoint and remove the city attorney and, and the city clerk, that we need to, to act similar, not similar, exactly the same, you know, be, be completely impartial and fair, you know, for the, for the welfare of, of the cities. for the welfare of the city's services and the benefit of all.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
My proposition, because maybe a couple of years from now, the city will be much better and with developers are coming, blah, blah, blah. I mean, we will be in very stronger economic position. I repeat again, can you, your proposition was six thousand for the adjustment from the attorney? Okay. Now, the proposition I did, I mean, at least what I saw the numbers, six thousand to the attorney and three thousand to the clerk, I mean, three thousand to the clerk.
That's in addition to...
In addition to what she had, because we're talking about now, we should, this thing next year, Yoli, next year, we should bring the clerk and the attorney separate to discuss this about salary.
We did, we have. This is an issue that has taken up, if I may, just for the record to clarify, the attorney's evaluation comes right after the swearing in of the newly elected commission and those that are on the board. That comes in, in the first meeting of May after every biannual election. The only issue that comes up for the attorney during the budget process is the review of the salary. As far as the clerk and the manager is concerned, our review takes place during the budget process. Why? Because it's smart to include any changes to those salaries prior to the submittal because this way, we have incorporated anything that will become an issue for the following year.
Yoli, Madam Clerk, but I think from now on, I think would be healthy for the table and for everybody, that those two personals that are under the commission, we bring the attorney and the clerk together, separate to the rest of the...
I understand.
So, it's gonna be easy for you and easy for us.
Yes, sir.
We got it. Okay, maybe one thing that we need to contemplate is, well...
We cut ten thousand, seven hundred dollars from those two, three things. So, Commissioner Blanis, do you agree? I mean, I just make a proposition to the table.
It's definitely, looking at this information, is definitely a start. Still, it's, even with an additional, the additional funds that you're referring to, it's still lower, but, you know, yes, I'm in agreement, considering the budget situation and the funds, the way they are allocated.
Because we are, we still are in the process of developments coming and...
Okay, what about the...
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Madam Manager?
Yes, ma'am.
I know that for many, many years, the employees across the board of the city of West Miami did not receive raises because times were tough.
Yes, ma'am.
So, it's what, what, two, four, how many years did...
Well, there was a period of time where, I believe, Mercedes, correct me if I'm wrong, we went about four years without any, without any increases at all.
Times were tough and we...
Exactly. And what we're trying to do now is, through the budget process, reestablish some of the lost opportunities for COLA increases and specifically for the labor workforce. And we cannot ignore the fact that they are the backbone of the city.
Absolutely.
Try to reintroduce the wage plan, the longevity bonuses were introduced because we've got to bring these folks a little bit up to par to what other cities are making. Again, that applies for all offices, including the one that you're speaking to and which is the issue of the city clerk and the city attorney and everybody, everywhere. Obviously, you're dealing with very, a lot of little zeros behind those budget dollars for a lot of municipalities.
So, the budget that I'm looking at here...
So, we were behind the eight ball for many years.
So, the budget that I'm looking at here, that has taken already into consideration all the, those cost of living adjustments, that has already been given to all the employees across the board?
That is correct. Well, that is given after your approval of the final budget this evening.
Right, but this already worked into this budget that's due for us now.
That is working progress to take effect October 1st, 2014.
Okay, so, I understand where the city attorney's money will be coming from. Where might this money come from?
Well, I was just having a conversation with the vice mayor before the meeting started. I didn't know that it would be addressed this evening. We got two options here. We can either take it from reserves and that would probably be my, let's call it, my gut recommendation, only because we're really cutting our line items, we're shaving off as much as possible, I mean, even to the two hundred, five thousand dollars in vehicle repair accounts. So, I would suggest to you that if in fact you're going to revisit the issue of the salary, another salary adjustment for the clerk, then you take it from reserves.
Let me ask, may I?
I have one follow-up question. If we didn't make this decision now, is there another appropriate time that it could be done? Or does it have to be done now at this budget time?
Whatever the commission wishes to address in terms of financial impact to the city should be done through the budget process because this gives us our working, basically our bible, our marching orders for next year. That being said, it is, there are only three positions that are funded via a salary and a compensation packet that respond to the commission directly, and that would be the managers, the clerks and the city attorney, although the engineer reports as well, but they're under a retainer situation. That being said, you can address the issue of the salary of any of these three individuals at any time during the year, but that may trigger a budget amendment process.
Okay.
So...
May I?
Thank you, yes, yes, thank you.
Yolanda, I'm talking about what we're talking about before. We got the two thousand from the training.
Yes, sir.
And one thousand from your, from your training too.
Yes, sir.
Three thousand dollars.
Correct.
That's the three thousand dollars we're talking about.
If that is your wish, then we would have to still...
Right, but it's going back to the reserve.
It increases the reserves by three thousand.
One of the things that I say, one of the things that I say in the opening of the first budget hearing, the second one, is that I didn't want to take from any money from the reserve. So, in an effort to put money back into the reserve, that's why we made those cuts. That's all. I'm not saying I'm in agreement or disagreement. I'm open, I'm open, but I want to clarify that. It will be coming out of reserve. And as a matter of fact, I changed my mind in my personal account, I was gonna give it back to the arts and so on, and I decided to put it back into the reserve in an effort to go back to the reserve. So, I just want to clarify that. Okay? But we have a proposition on the table.
Now...
Hold on, hold on, I'm not finished speaking. You have a proposition on the table, Commissioner Suarez, you brought the motion to the table, you said, Vice Mayor, you said in your agreement? I just want to move along. I just want to, I mean, we can talk about this all night.
It sounds reasonable and yes, I'm in agreement. I mean, I don't see any other possible, you know, situation that we can allocate any other funds, so, yes.
Madam Manager?
If I may, in your motion, because salaries are subject to personnel benefits, we need to increase it to accommodate for potential benefit increases, I would put in another five hundred dollars. Just to take into consideration the Florida retirement system benefits, FICA, unemployment compensation benefits that the city has to pay. So, I would cap it at thirty-five hundred with the understanding that the five hundred dollars would go to offset some of those personnel benefits so that we can adjust the personnel benefits in the salary account.
Agree with you? I mean, me, I agree with you, that's it.
Okay, so we have a motion.
So, it's three thousand for the salary, a motion, and five hundred for, to take care of personnel benefits.
Okay, so we have a motion and does that make it a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye. So, motion passes.
And again, that we would take from reserves.
That is correct. Twist my arm. Next item, let's move right along. Madam Clerk, can you read item I, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item eleven I.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, hold on. Madam Manager, do we discuss all the items?
All the pending items that I have, yes, I didn't have anything further, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right, so... Yes, Madam Clerk, can you...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item I, resolution of the city of West Miami, Florida, establishing the 2014 final mileage rate upon all real and personal property within the city limits for the payment of the amount appropriated in the 2014-15 final budget by mayor and city commission.
Okay, need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanis?
Yes.
Mayor Mojina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Okay, next item.
Item eleven J, public hearing on the final city budgets for fiscal year 2014-15, all city funds by mayor and city commission.
Thank you. At this time, we open the public hearing. Does anybody wants to speak in the public hearing?
Nobody has a interest, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Close, back to the table. Item K?
Item eleven K, resolution adopting the final budgets for fiscal year 2014-15 by mayor and city commission.
Make a motion.
Okay, I need a second. Can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Rodriguez, have your vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanis?
Yes.
Mayor Mojina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes. Item eleven L, resolution of the city of West Miami, Florida, adopting the final water enterprise fund budget for the year 2014-15. And I would like to amend the heading of this resolution with, which should note the amount of the...
Water enterprise fund.
...of the water fund, which is six hundred thirty-five thousand, one hundred nine dollars and zero cents.
Okay, need a motion?
Motion. Second.
Okay, call the vote.
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanis?
Yes.
Mayor Mojina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes. Item eleven M, recommendation of design criteria, professional services proposal by TY Lin International in support of a design build request for proposals, RFP, for city of West Miami Public Park, Southwest 12th Street and 66th Avenue, by director of public works and city manager.
Mr. Mayor, before we yield to Mr. Penna, who has been working with the city engineers, it should be noted for the record that this property involves the expansion of the, as we know it, Garden Club Park, and it includes the property that the city purchased back in May, 11/29, Southwest 66th Avenue. This concept that we are trying to present to you, and I'll let Mr. Penna speak to that as well, also includes a forestry grant that the city has been awarded where the city has to put a ten thousand dollar mark, match to a ten thousand dollar project. So, we will have a total of twenty thousand dollars that has been approved by this commission, the match, to add to the enhancement of this park. And with that, I will leave Mr. Penna to address you on the technicalities of this.
Mr. Penna?
The twenty thousand dollars goes towards the landscaping. Forestry grant has to be for native species...
Correct.
...to be included in the park. This is a lot that contains ten thousand, oh, I'm sorry, fifteen thousand square feet, which is added to the back of the West Miami Garden Club Park. Our intention is to remove the wall that divides the two properties going north and south and continue that perimeter wall around the residential side of the park. That will protect the neighbors that back up to that park. And in a similar fashion to Cooper Park, we want to install a, demolish the existing structure and install a large gazebo towards that part of the park and provide pathways, recreational equipment, items like that, and match the existing fence line on the 66th Avenue side, which is columns with picket fencing.
Okay, sounds good.
They need a go-ahead in order to start producing the design criteria for the plans and specifications for the park. You have before you their proposal. Alonzo's here, if you have any questions for him.
Okay, any questions for TY Lin?
If I may add, Mr. Mayor, just the, any expense associated with the expansion of the existing facilities or any work that will occur on this site as approved by this commission would be coming from impact fees. Currently, the city has a total of, I want to say, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in park impact fees. These dollars are paid by developments and they are for the specific purpose of building or acquiring property, which we have in this case, that would create more park spaces to accommodate development in the pipeline, as Commissioner Suarez has talked about. So, they are intended to accommodate new population in the city of West Miami. So, that being said, the intent here is to comply with our comprehensive plan with the need for green space and possibly, possibly turn this into another venue that the city could conceivably rent for birthday parties on weekends. And it's another way where we can try to tap into some new dollars and a passive park that they could use or bring their children to during the week.
Okay, any questions for TY Lin?
Yeah, I just want to, not TY Lin, not Mr. Penna, but I just make a comment to us and the viewers, that when we expand these parks, we have to have a prorating of the new neighbors that come, the buildings, more population, we need more green area, more parks. That's why we have to have this in proportion with the new neighbors. So, that's why we have to do this and we have to do well. So, I agree with this.
Thank you for the clarification. All right, if nobody has a question, then I need a motion for...
The resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right.
Item eleven N, resolution of the mayor and the city commission of the city of West Miami authorizing the city manager to execute a proposal for professional services for design criteria in support of a design build project known as the city of West Miami Public Park of Southwest 12th Street and 66th Avenue in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. It should be noted that the heading of this resolution shall be amended to note that this is payable to TY Lin International to be funded by impact fees parks, providing for effective date by mayor and city commission.
Make a motion?
Second.
Okay, I have two first motion, hold on a second. I...
Mrs. Blanca?
A divided motion.
Okay, so, Commissioner Blanca?
Commissioner Blanca.
Yes.
And second?
Second.
I mean, Blanis, my mayor, Vice Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanis?
Yes.
Mayor Mojina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Go to the order. Motion to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.